Mr. Turner, you can proceed with your presentation. Just maybe if you want to give us a quick list of what we're going through today. Thank you for Plan Moran for being here with us as well, in case we have any questions. You can go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, on the screen here, we have the table of contents for the meeting today.
Are you doing this one today or are you doing that one for Tuesday?
This is for every day. The names will change underneath, but we will have opening remarks, any comments from the mayor's office prior to starting, and then we'll go through the departments.
Okay.
For each day.
Okay.
So we will have opening remarks, any comments from the mayor's office. We will go through the pension budget, the fire budget, communications and newsletter, city council budget, corporate council budget, and then the comptroller's office budget. And councillor chair, if I may-
Yes, sir.
-make a request that we hold all questions to these meeting or agenda items, and then we will certainly get back to any questions you may have when the department is here and could be of assistance in answering questions that I can't answer.
So everyone that we're doing today will have somebody from that department here, correct?
That is correct.
We should be fine?
Yes, but I'm just requesting that we don't ask questions about police when we're not working on police-
I agree, we should not, and I will hold that, this council accordingly. I'm sorry if that does that.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mayor, did you want to say anything before we get started? Okay. I did come up with a few budget highlights that I wanted to just give you some little bit of information before we get started. Again, with this budget 24-25 year, we are budgeting for $849,000 in capital outlays. We have a little over a million dollars in salary changes related to staffing, both union and non. We have approximately $942,000 in sidewalk major repairs, local road repairs and maintenance expenditures, 1.3 million in court revenue increases, and 2.47 million in grant revenue that we are projecting along with expenditures that go with those grants, just at a high level. As we mentioned last time, overall, our revenue for this 24-25 fiscal year is estimated to be $167,283,22.
Pause just for one second. I'm gonna hold the conference. It's off. Sorry. Thank you, councillor.
Right, proceed.
Thank you.
Total expenditures for the 24-25 budgeted year, $169,302,715. You'll see on the graphs, each category, we have subtitled those in the pie chart for your review. Overall, we are expecting approximately a $2.9 million deficit that we will use general funds to cover. Overall, we're projecting for the 2024-2025 fiscal year approximately $130,000, $130,622,806 in total fund balances. That includes all funds. The first department we're gonna look at is the mayor's office. That would be on page six of your-
Bear right with us, please. Thank you for that and setting this page up in the way you did. I truly appreciate that.
Well, and I would like to thank Mariana and Michelle for helping me get through that because with the, some of these reports come out of one system, some of them come out of another, so it was definitely a little more taxing to make this happen than I expected. And I do want to thank them for jumping in. Also, this is Mahdi. I don't know if everybody knows Mahdi.
Yeah, we all know Mahdi.
He's been here for a little bit.
Yep, we know Mahdi.
He's one of the guys that helped guide this department. He's an integral part of what we do on a daily basis, and I just wanted to make sure I recognize him.
Thank you.
Okay, in the mayor's department, first two line items are payroll. The $109,000 is the elected official payroll, and then the balance of that, which is $143,077, is his staff. On the, for your guys' program, the payroll will be on top of the department budget. For anybody watching online, it will be in consecutive sheets, so this is the mayor's budget here. The next page is the salaries detail. For the 24-25 year, one of the mayor's administrative assistants was a .6 FTE. This year, we're budgeting it as a full FTE. That's the only difference between the two major years of '23-24 and-
What, the executive secretary, you said?
Executive assistant, yes. She was part, she was .6 in the '23-24 budget, and she's 1.0 FTE in the 24-25.
Is it going from 54 to, no, that's not. I see, I see it on the, oh no, that's, okay, hold on. The executive secretary from 54,571 to 57,299. It's not showing me what they made in the past. 2023-2024 budget, is that what it's saying? So they're going up, what is that, a couple of thousand dollars?
Annually, yes.
Yeah, annually. Well, $3,000.
Correct.
$3,000?
Correct.
Okay, that's great. There was also an adjustment as well on the chief of staff as well, so there was two changes.
Correct.
The mayor's office was done by the commission board, so that has nothing to do with us. We're just following, based on what the commission board is, from 107 to 109. The chief of staff and the executive secretary are both the two changes that are happening in the mayor's office.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not just the executive secretary. I'm just making that for correction.
Oh yeah, I'd only gotten to the part where she, her FTE changed. I was gonna go there next, but thank you. Because what you're gonna see is most of the employees that are, had not received raises historically are in here with a 5% raise.
Historically, we gave raises.
No one got them last year.
They did the year before. We were in negotiations.
Correct.
Yes, but continue.
All right, so you, the 5% is in this category, and it's the difference between '23-24, '24-25.
Correct.
Part-time salaries, you'll notice that the 2024 number is a bit higher than the '25, and again, that's because of the executive assistant moving from part-time to full-time. So you'll see, we raised her salary in the salary line, but we reduced it on the part-time line because she's no longer part-time.
Would this be for Stephanie?
Correct.
Yes or no? Who is it? What difference does it make? Somebody calls your phone, she says her name. We're not bashing anybody. Shouldn't make a difference. My question is, who's the executive secretary? Is this a new position or is it a current position? So is it the person that's there now? So she's going from three days a week to four days a week, or two days a week to four days a week? But it's not reflecting on the, on the city of Dearborn Heights personnel page. On the personnel page, it's saying only went up $3,000. Yeah, give me.
Hi, Mariana Hernandez, chief of staff.
Thank you, Mariana.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify a few things here. So all non-union employees throughout the budget, you will see a 5% increase that has been proposed for all non-union positions that have not received the salary increase since 2021. So that was when the salary increase took place. So just to clarify that. With regards to the part-timer, no, that is a regular secretary that's part-time there who helps us whenever there is no coverage in the city. Whenever the executive secretary is off or am in meetings, we always have somebody there that can help keep the residents informed and the door open for that. So that's what the part-time salary is for. The executive secretary is moving full-time to the mayor's office. She used to be split between us and the ordinance department, but ordinance now has two full-time clerical positions, so that's why we're moving the executive secretary back into the mayor's office because they're gonna have, hopefully, a new secretary starting there in July.
Okay, now this executive secretary, is this a union position or non-union?
Non-union, exactly. So the 5% is only for non-union positions that you'll see throughout the-
But prior, was it union or no?
Never been union.
Sure.
A hundred percent.
Okay.
So I got a question to Mariana. The part-time position, so it's, we're allocating $24,000, that's for the floater position?
No. So the floater position was proposed, but it was not budgeted. So the part-time position is just for another secretary to assist whenever there's no coverage in the mayor's office by the executive secretary or myself.
If we're looking at 707-100, part-time position, we're budgeting $24,000, and then we're recommending $24,000, so we are offering that. So there's a mistake in there, if you want to just correct that. On our paper, it's showing, I don't know if you have, if these were not updated or not.
Correct what? I'm sorry. So we've always had a part-time salary throughout the years, as you can see.
Yeah.
So we're still budgeting the same part-time position. We are recommending to add a clerk floater. That was not budgeted. So that would be a new position that was not budgeted, so you can see it in your, at the top in your personnel pages, it is unfunded. And we were proposing $45,000 for that position, which would have covered not just the mayor's office, but also any other departments that need coverage at different times of the year.
On the top page, it's not even listed. It goes mayor, chief of staff, executive secretary, asset manager, clerk, floater.
That's what I mean. The clerk floater would have been the new position. Part-timers are never in the personnel pages because they're not full-time employees, and part-times have never been there.
So basically, we had a part-time secretary, now she's gonna be the executive secretary, and we're gonna keep a part-time position?
No. We've always had an executive secretary. She was just split, and she was full-time, she was just split in the budget between us and ordinance, but she's always been full-time.
Okay. But we're still budgeting for it, you're saying?
Yes, for the executive secretary and myself.
But the part-time, you're not, you're not budgeting for it?
We are.
But on the personnel sheet, you're not budgeting for it?
We'd never show part-time employees on the personnel pages, it's just FTEs.
Yeah, but you show it, though.
No.
You say clerk floater.
The clerk floater would have been a new, completely separate from part-time, a completely new position. So a part-timer and a clerk.
Okay, we're not gonna spend too much more time on this, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No worries. Another position that you see in the personnel pages-
Hold on one second, I'm sorry, Mayor, you have something to say? I can see that, but on the actual, on the actual budget form, it does show it. And if you look at 707-100, it says that we are budgeting. She just said we're gonna budget for it, doesn't mean we're filling it. Yeah, part-time.
Again, so to clarify, you're not gonna see part-time positions on the personnel pages, but you will see money allocated for part-timers in the budget.
Okay, I'm just gonna put a checkmark by it, we'll come back to that.
Okay. And again, I just wanted to highlight that an asset manager is another recommended and proposed position. We've had a presentation about that in prior council meetings. We do believe it is highly necessary because there's a lot of city assets that need to be managed properly, and we do still recommend that.
But you did not budget for it, correct?
Correct, but it's still-
It's not on the personnel nor on the budget form.
Correct.
Okay.
But again, still a recommendation for your consideration.
Good job. Thank God, it's a fluted document, we can always amend it.
Yep.
If need me. Thank you.
Thank you, chief of staff.
Because the next line is overtime. We budgeted $1,000 for '24-25, which is consistent with what we did in '23-24. Hospital insurance, that is the staff benefit, health benefit, and we anticipate that number going up due to cost increases. General government pension, that number increased slightly from '23-24 to '24-25, and we do anticipate that that increase actually happening. Fringe benefits went down slightly from prior year to this year.
About $10,000, you know why?
Oh, it's, uh-
Did we over-budget last time?
Five thousand.
Yeah, we did.
Five thousand.
No, this is down-
Fringe benefit?
$10,000.
Went from 24 to 19.
Went from 3242 to 1908.
This is the requested budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, recommended budget, no?
Yes, yes.
Requested, yeah, requested.
The recommended is what we're, what we're proposing.
Okay, yes, yes, I'm sorry. I was comparing the requested to the recommended. Thank you.
Even, I mean, you're saying it's going down, the projected activity is 18,000, so it's still going up, not down.
You requested 30, we only cut it at 19.
No, 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 we're talking about 23-24. It's, projected activity is gonna be 18,569, and we're going with 19, correct?
But the budget was 24, we're comparing it to the prior year budget.
Yeah, '23-24 was 13,927, '23-24-
That's through March, but through the end of the fiscal year, it's gonna be about 18,569, so just going up about 500 bucks.
Right, and just understand, when I'm suggesting that something's going up or down, it is in relationship to the prior year budget because that's what was, primarily that was approved. There were a couple of amendments, but primarily, that column is really what we all agreed to the previous year, so that was kind of the benchmark for which we're comparing. Mileage is going up slightly, $150. And then, I'm sorry, net supplies. I should have brought my ruler. Mileage is actually going up, nothing, so mileage is gonna stay $500. And then finally, community activity, which is, I believe, the mayor's activities, is going from 3,000 down to 15. So in total, the mayor's budget is going from 414, 426 in '23-24 to 437, 391 in '24-25.
So I'm so sorry. Where do you see that number? What was it again, the first one?
The 114, or 414, 426.
We don't have that.
I don't have that.
It's under the '23-24, at the very bottom, mayor's total.
We have 516, 926.
No, it is, sorry. Yeah, it's the 516, 926 is the amended budget for '23-24, and the budget for, that we're recommending is going down to 437, 391. So the second column to the last column, that's what we're comparing here.
So what was the change with the drop of almost 100 and some thousand dollars?
Well, they, I don't know. Let's do some quick math on my phone.
The biggest one is the part-time coverage because we used to pay part-time for the communications newsletter person out of the mayor's department, but it has now been moved to public information budget. So you'll see a big drop from 56,000 to 23,000 right there, so that's the biggest drop. And then a few thousand dollars here.
We got the salaries from 213 to 143.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 213 was a typo that we found in the budget. Thank you, we did catch that earlier, it took me a minute. For some reason, the prior comptroller believed that the asset manager had been approved by the council when we brought it to council, but it was defeated, so that has now been corrected. I do recall making that correction because he actually brought it up to my attention. So that was just a typo in budget amendments, but that is about $100,000 off, which would have been the asset manager position that did not get approved. So really, the budget for the mayor's office-
Is up a little bit.
Is, it's slightly up, yeah, it's the 5% for the two positions in there, but other than that, it should only be 5%.
Over here, amended budget, this is just saying that's a typo. So you're saying it's about 113, chief of staff?
I couldn't hear that. Yes. Michelle can verify that.
Yeah, she's saying, we're talking about the totals on page six or page seven? We're talking under amended budget, 213, under salaries.
So it's 213, if you add the two together. If you look on the screen there, that second column, it's the corrected amended budget. So it's 110 for everybody except for the mayor. So you see-
110?
110. 110 is the correct, the second-
I'm seeing 213.
Yes, 103 plus 110.
103 plus 110?
Yes.
110, 578?
Yes.
I'd like the exact one, can you give me the exact number?
Yes, 103, 578. All right, I'm sorry, 110, 578.
578, okay.
Is the number.
The second line.
Correct, yep.
Okay, so maybe you shake off about 113.
Mayor, did you have something to say?
He was just repeating the number.
14, 219. So the previous 2023 budget was 414, 426.
Correct.
So it went up about, 15, oh, 14, about-
23K.
23K. Thank you. Any other questions?
Councillor Carson, any questions?
Next item on the agenda is the golf course. Page 28 of your-
Page what?
28.
Hi. So as you can see, there is a request of $600,000 that was proposed. That is because we are expecting that the 569,007 that was remaining for this year for the paving of the parking lot will not be completed. The reason why is because the city engineer did not want to do the paving until the construction was done. That way, the trucks do not ruin the new pavement as they're finishing the building. As soon as the building is completed, the pavement will be done. We are still unsure if it's gonna be this fiscal year or next fiscal year, so again, it was in the requested as a proposed. In addition, there was a request from the maintenance department for us to do a $30,000 equipment maintenance request, because as you know, we now own all of the equipment that's in the golf course that had been approved last year to be purchased, and that equipment will need maintenance at some point. Right now, it's in pretty decent shape, but eventually, it will have to be maintained by us. It is our equipment.
Do we buy those new or used?
We bought them used for the most part, so I remember there was a whole list.
Yeah, so then I'd recommend that we do a yearly maintenance and not wait until next year, maybe we should consider doing it this year.
That's why I'm bringing it up, but that's up to you. And then there's also a $50,000 site maintenance request as well, because we never know when there's a storm that's gonna come. Last year, we had a huge one that knocked down various trees in the golf course. Again, that's outside of the contract of our regular, you know, golf maintenance concessionaire, so that's a recommendation as well because we never know what might happen as far as site maintenance.
So does this say we've put so far 2.6 million, close to 2.7 million dollars into the golf course, and then we still have an additional $600,000 that has to be used?
So I believe we put 2,100-ish because we have the remaining 569,000 that was already pre-approved. So again, all of these were pre-approved when we approved of the renovations of the golf course. So yes, around 2 million and a half, I mean, 2,210,000.
Okay.
But again, other than what was already pre-approved, we're only recommending for maintenance to be added.
So in total, all we spent is 2.7 million in total on the golf course?
We haven't spent the full 2.7.
I know, but we sold, in total, all, all in all, we have budgeted since 2022, 2023, so like everybody else is giving these fake numbers that we spent 3.9 million on the golf course, here it is in front of us. It's a plus, I'm just saying this is a good thing.
From what I understand, yes, I would have to look at the 21-22 budget, but I don't recall if there was any expenses for the golf course.
The golf course wasn't approved in 2021.
Then yes, then that should be the correct number. Sorry, my dates are a bit off.
No.
Yeah, what I'm asking is, this budget, I actually liked that they brought it on front of us, to be honest with you. I want to be able to see that, I want the residents to be able to see that. This is being transparent. What is it? No, no, we didn't, but I think in the contract, we agreed that we were gonna give them X amount of dollars, so now it's in the budget to showcase it. This wouldn't be a yearly thing. Yeah.
Yeah, this was for to replace the golf cart trails and the maintenance outside to the bathrooms and restrooms.
The pumps.
And the greens, no, the greens, they were replaced.
We replaced the greens with it.
Yeah, this was the money for that.
Yeah. Okay. What's that?
He asked for the bridges, we didn't do any work on the bridges.
Bridges? We didn't do bridges.
Oh, we had them inspected.
Well, we did have it inspected, but I don't think we did any major capital improvements to the bridges.
We did, there was one or two bridges that were, the surfaces were replaced completely on them.
Okay, sorry. We have the whole list, if you want to ask additional questions, the city engineer knows exactly what was done. But yes, it was pretty much to bring the golf course back to usable code, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Up next, we're gonna go to page 49, which is the opioid remediation fund. This is a new fund that you haven't seen before, it's a new state requirement for us to have in a separate fund. In the past, you would have seen it in the revenues. And again, the opioid remediation fund is funds that we get from a settlement with various pharmaceutical companies, and it can only be used for opioid remediation. The money that we get is per the state opioid settlement payments, so we receive that and approved it by council, those are the funds that we get every year. We did have expenditures this year with regards to the AEDs that were purchased by the fire department. The total was about, no, the total was $71,455 for AEDs that were purchased and approved by the council in the past. We don't have any projected expenditures yet, but if we do come up with a new remediation need, we will let the council know.
You know, do we know how much is in there in total? That we've collected through the state? If you don't have that answer, it's okay, you can get back to me.
So far, you've gotten $68,000 between last year and this year's settlement. The reason why you got so much last year, so you got $60,000 last year, and that was because one of the pharmaceutical companies paid five years in advance. And so this year, you only got the $8,000. Next year-
And so this year, you only got the eight thousand, next year, more of the pharmaceutical companies have settled, so you'll get a bigger payment next year of about eighty-nine thousand dollars.
So is that only an estimate or this is a concrete number?
This is a concrete number that has already been settled, yep, and so you'll get that over the next fifteen years.
And is that restricted on what you can use it on?
Yes, you can only use it on things that help with the opioid crisis, so things that remediate the negative effects of opioid use or education towards opioid prevention.
Can we use it towards Narcan machines that other cities are pouring throughout cities?
I would think that's probably a use for it, yeah.
A resolution.
All right, so yeah, forty-nine is the revenues, fifty is the expenditures, and then up next, we're going to go to page fifty-one, which is right there as well, which is our, it's going to be, I'm sorry, our capital budget, so.
You said fifty-one?
Yes.
Is that six hundred seventeen dollars? The rest are all blank.
Yeah, so it's our capital project fund.
That's the old one, do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, why don't you stay up there?
Okay, I will. There you go, so that's the old capital projects fund, that's what you used to construct the library. So that does not have a budget this year because the library has clearly been done for several years. The one that Mariana was going to talk about is the next set of funds, which is the four oh three capital project fund.
What what page is that on?
Fifty-three?
Sorry. Confusion there, there's two capitals right next to each other. So yes, in fund four oh three, this is where we're going to start building some of those capital improvement projects that we have, as you see right now, we have the ten million dollars that were approved for the fire station. So as we keep getting approvals for some of those, you start seeing them here. And that ten million dollars, I believe we need to have the design and the bid outs done by December of next of this year, sorry.
I thought it was June.
I thought it was done on June.
Yeah.
Verifying the dates for that, but I know that we have to get a lot of things done by December, so.
So state rep, I think when you're on leave, came in and spoke to us.
The benchmark.
I did email them today, so hopefully I'll get some exact dates for that, but again, we know we have the ten million dollars and we have to use it this fiscal year, so we have it.
Do we physically have the ten million or?
No.
Just approval?
No, so most grants that we receive are reimbursable, so we put the money and then they reimburse us as we start spending some of that money.
So my question is about grants, is that they're already put out as investments, they're for investments, why are they added into the overall budget? If they're, if they're, grants are allocated for investment into the city, these aren't grants that are part of the budget, they're.
You still have to, you still have to disclose.
No.
Yep, so the way that.
Promise you do.
The way GAAP works, so the accounting that you need to do for it, you have to budget for the revenues and budget for the expenditures, so even though it's not costing the city any net out of pocket, you still have to put it into your budget. Does that make sense?
No, so money that we do have from grants in the budget should not be put towards the budget because it's already been allocated for investments into the city. So we're including it of the overall one hundred and thirty million or one hundred and sixty-seven million dollar budget, and hypothetically, I think we have a two point seven million dollars in grant money, because what it is, is that when you put that money, that money automatically falls out into the investment we're putting it in.
Right, so it nets to zero, right?
But it's still in the overall budget.
It has to be because that's the way the GAAP would make you account for it, so you would have to actually account for the revenue and account for the expenses, even though it nets to zero, it's just the accounting that has to be. Public Act Two would require that you put in the expenditure and the revenue.
So I want to tell the councilman, on my first budget year, I had the same exact argument.
It's a valid argument, I completely understand.
But I understand where he's coming from because technically, we're making it look pretty.
Right.
When in reality, it's not there, it's really been allocated somewhere, like the ten million dollars is part of the one hundred and sixty-seven million dollars, but really, the ten million dollars is going somewhere, I see where the councilman's coming up.
Absolutely, yep.
You want, can you grab a chair?
And then my other question is for about the fire station, I know I had spoken to our state rep and the benchmark to get plans to show the state that we're actually moving forward with it, I think was the end of June, she said, and our deadline, so that way the money or else it wouldn't be allocated anywhere else. By December thirty-first, we're supposed to have design, everything approval to get the money.
Yes.
So our benchmarks to submit to show the state we're serious, I believe is in the end of June, if I'm not mistaken.
But this is budget here, let's.
No, I know.
But I agree with you. I agree with you. Councilman's saying, let's let's keep it short, that we're being serious and not procrastinate towards the end.
We're on it.
Thank you.
And and yes, so again, fifty-three is the revenues for that ten million dollars and immediately you see it go out in page fifty-four as the expenses. And I think that's it for me.
Question. Sorry, if I'm, page fifty-three is state grants.
That's the revenue.
State, oh, it says state grants.
Yep, the the grant money.
Yeah.
Yep.
Fifty-four, ten million dollars.
Is capital outlay related to those grants?
Okay.
Yep.
So I was making it look twenty million dollars pretty.
No, one's a revenue, one's an expense, they net to zero.
Okay.
Yep.
What page are we going to next?
I think you're going to pension? Thirty-two.
Okay.
Council members, this is the, this is the general government employee pension program. This this budget pretty much stayed the same from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. The biggest difference is the increase in cost related to investment of funds. So we we expect the 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 cost of investment to go up this year from two hundred twenty thousand to two hundred thirty thousand. Everything else is still, it's pretty much still.
That's page, yeah, that's page thirty-two you said?
Thirty, thirty-two.
Yes, okay, I see it, from two twenty to two thirty.
Yes, sir.
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
So those are the stockbroker commissions and things like that?
Yeah.
For Morgan Stanley?
Correct. If there's no questions there, we'll go on to page.
I'm so sorry, you said we went up on the ten thousand because of what expenses?
Investment, Morgan Stanley and our other investment partners, we're anticipating paying them a little more because we're doing a little better.
Madam Clerk, Madam Treasurer, are we expected to pay Morgan Stanley an additional ten thousand dollars this year? Yeah, come on up.
So our investments have gone up, our value in investments, and so when that goes up, they're paid by basis points on the assets that they hold, each of our investment managers. So since our assets, assets are up, excuse me, our assets are up then, our fees are going up, so it would be all of our asset managers, so we have more than one.
Okay, so the more money you make, the more.
Yeah.
Okay. Or fees, those are commissions.
And we we, for the year ending twelve thirty-one, we had very good earnings, so for general, we had about.
So for, if it went up ten thousand, I'm just hypothetically, can you tell me how much we've profited though?
So for twelve thirty-one, for general, we gained fifteen point one two percent.
Fifteen point two one?
One, two.
Is there a figure number, sort of a percentage?
Um, I don't have it with me, I can get it for you if you like.
That's fine.
Okay, I mean, it it changes daily, but as of what date, and I can get it for you.
Hypothetical, just throw me a number out there that you would assume that you'd feel comfortable, could be up or down?
So about a hundred ninety thousand in assets for police and fire and around forty for general. Million, yeah.
And it's only costing us ten grand?
Extra, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm really, I'm, I'm actually extremely okay with that.
Yeah, market's higher than it's ever been.
Oh, you okay? Okay.
But also in that fund, we pay our actuaries, our lawyers, and our insurance.
Thank you for all that you do. And thank you for being here today.
No problem.
I know this is your second time. You should just come to all of them.
Third time's a charm, right?
Yes. You're all set, thank you.
Okay.
Council chair, if I may, can we go back to the the golf course budget on page twenty-eight? There's nothing, page twenty-eight.
You want to finish this real quick? Yeah, let's just finish this since we're here. Thank you. Randy, I think you've got to scoot down so they can all, there should be, there should be four chairs there. Please sit, good, be careful.
So again, page thirty-three is the twenty-four, twenty-five, Act Three Forty-Five Pension. And again, with this, with this budget is pretty much the same as previous year, we had sixty-five thousand one hundred for twenty-three, twenty-four, we have sixty-five thousand ninety dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Wait.
Repeat that again, I'm sorry.
For twenty-three, twenty-four, total budget for the Act Three Forty-Five Pension expense was sixty-five thousand one hundred.
Okay.
And for this year, we're recommending sixty-five thousand ninety dollars.
I'm seeing sixty-five thousand.
I don't see sixty.
Oh, okay, 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 I see it, sixty-five one hundred.
Sixty-five is your nine zero.
Yeah.
That's sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Thousand or?
Yes, sixty-five thousand ninety.
Not the sixty-two million.
I'm thinking sixty-two million.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, 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 that's, that's the total.
Okay.
That's the, that's the total for the.
Okay.
Are there any questions with that?
The projected activities for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was fifty-five thousand three fifteen. We amended it and went to sixty-five thousand one hundred. No, 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 we stole, we spent more than we projected.
The amended budget was sixty-five one hundred.
Correct.
That's what you budgeted at the beginning of the year, you haven't amended anything in that yet, even though it says amended budget, nothing's been amended in this department. But then our projected activity at the end of the year, we expect it to be at about fifty-five thousand, so we're actually less than what we had budgeted.
Ten dollars.
Ten thousand.
No, ten thousand. Sixty-five thousand was the amended budget, fifty-five thousand is the projected.
I I am so, no, what are you saying?
So the second column?
I know, I know, I see that, but I thought you were comparing the sixty-five thousand one hundred to the sixty-five thousand ninety.
No, that's what we're expecting next year, so we're budgeting ten dollars less.
Okay, budget season, guys, and it's five in the afternoon on a Monday. So where do you expect the ten thousand to be spent on for expenses for next year?
So the budget, you mean between what's projected?
I mean, we're going to be spending about fifty-five this year, so we're budgeting sixty-five for next year, you're saying.
So it it's in part-time salaries and the reason why is there were some ish, health issues that prevented. And we didn't have an administrator during the year, so it's going to be under budget this year by ten thousand and next year, we just expect it to be where we expected it to be.
Okay, I see that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
If we could, go back to the the golf course, we did have a couple of items, council, that we were hoping we could put in front of you for approval.
What, what, what page?
Page twenty-eight, that was the one, member, for the.
Well, the council can't make any decisions today, you can give us an updated email with, and then you can bring it to a meeting, but I'd like to hear it, go ahead.
Okay, we have a couple of items at the golf course for equipment maintenance, and I think that was one of the things Mariana was referencing when she was here about the, about the golf, the golf course and the equipment.
Now, is it going to be, equipment maintenance is going to happen through Revage or will it happen through Building and Maintenance Department? Because in reality, I mean, that that would be a different discussion, but yeah, we own the equipment, but we're, they're the Leeses, like they're operating, owning and operating everything of that, of that place. That would be like, we need to go buy a brand-new kitchen and say we have to maintain the kitchen every year, even though that this company is going to be using it, so if the company's going to be using our equipment, they should be maintaining and paying for the equipment that they're using. If a kitchen goes, something goes bad in the kitchen, you need a new fire extinguisher, the city's going to come take care of it. I I ran out leased out a building, I maintained that building, I don't tell the landlord, hey, I need to maintain the stuff that's inside here even though you bought it, let me give you the money, I'm just thinking out loud, at least I'm speaking for myself. And again, there can be no decisions made here, I do agree, the equipment that we purchased should be maintained, but it shouldn't fall on top of us, that's all I say, unless it's something Building and Maintenance is going to look over, but as far as taxpayers to say, you know, this is privately owned at this point currently for the next twenty years or ten years or however long the contract is for, we're going to ask taxpayers for on the north and the south end to come out and pay for this, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, and so, and so what I heard you say was two things, one, we would need to send you an email or some point of reference requesting that this be discussed and.
Correct, because I'm just speaking for me, that would be my argument on it, but again, you you can't ask us to make a decision because we're not voting on anything today. Today, we are just going through regular budget here, you can, you can bring us an email and bring it back in front of council and we can amend this budget, you know, there's going to be a lot of changes on this budget until we vote on this before May seventh, or is it the May seventh date?
Yeah, May seventh, yes.
May twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, May twenty-eighth. Yeah. Yes, sir, councilman.
Yeah, would, someone should probably look at the contract and see what it says, so.
I think, yeah.
Somebody's using a golf cart and it gets a flat tire or something, let's say, who's responsible for the cost to fix or replace that tire?
It would be the golf course.
But it should be in the contract somewhere spelled out, I would think. If it's our equipment, we own it.
Well, we don't own the golf court, golf carts, those are being leased out by the company that's operating its business, in order for them to operate their business that they're leasing from us. They had to get.
They'll do the maintenance?
Yeah.
Makes sense, but yeah, I'll try to look at the contract.
I will.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
The next item up is the fire department.
What page is that?
On page twenty-two.
Look at that, it's my lucky day, open right up to it. Play the auto.
Good evening, council.
Thank you, chief, for being here with us today.
Yeah, absolutely, and I apologize, some of my stuff is still in the other room, we were still in the middle of some negotiations, but one of the biggest items that we've been concerned about at the Fire Department has been our overtime budget, that's been due to the manpower shortage that we've been, that's across all of Western Wayne County, there's a shortage of firefighters and particular paramedics, and that's something that we're working on.
When you talk about part-time, can you give us the line item so that we're not searching for it?
Oh, I mean overtime.
Yeah, or the, or the overtime?
Overtime is seven oh nine.
Seven nine hundred zero zero zero?
Yep.
Thank you.
So a- as you can see, it's, we've budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars, that's. So a- as you can see, it's, we've budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars. That's um, and and we'll probably be over that this year, and that's because of, uh, you know, we have to have people on the trucks every day. And there's, we're down six positions right now, and it's just very hard to keep.
How many have we hired over the year? Can you tell me?
One.
That's not good.
No, no, it's not good. And um, and so hopefully, like I said, we're in negotiations right now. I just left there, and we're making some good strides. If we get the contracts settled, I do believe that we'll see a lot of improvements, and I think that that's gonna um, that that will have the manpower. I think we'll fill all six positions pretty quickly is my, is my hope.
Yeah. Well, I know that last year we were projected to do the same thing, and we still haven't, so.
And we haven't, yeah. But now with this new contract, I would, I believe that that we will.
So do we have a new contract already?
No, we're, but we're, but we're working on it right now. So that, I mean, that literally, I I just, I just left, I just left the room. We're in mediation.
Well, then we'll, we'll keep it quick so you can go back to mediation.
Okay, good.
So chief, if you're on, if you're on uh field disposition, are we looking at the same projected activity like this year?
Yes, that's, that'd be correct.
If not more, he said.
Yeah.
More, more than the eight hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We're looking about nine fifty-three.
Prob- probably that would be correct, but uh, like I said, I I really am optimistic that we're gonna get some more people in, in the door. So that, that, that's some of our big, our big, our big items. Another thing to consider is um, uh, in our capital outlay, we're not gonna do it this year, but, but we, we are gonna need uh a fire truck eventually, probably two squads eventually.
Can you give me a line item on capital outlay? I got it, though.
So.
Nine eight one five hundred?
Nine eight one zero zero zero. So it's right above that one.
Oh, nine eight one, okay. Capital, that, well, I was looking at the wrong number, I'm sorry.
So you saw my request amount was pretty high, and a lot of that, a, a fire truck is a million dollars, so just the truck alone right now. The, the cost of fire trucks has, has skyrocketed, um, and it takes, the, the concern is it takes about two to three years to build them, and so that's, that's where, why, why I brought it up now. We don't need a truck right this minute, but we will need a truck.
I got a question for you. How many new trucks do we have?
Well, we have, um, we, we don't have any brand-new trucks. We have our uh, and again, I don't have.
Fairly newer trucks.
Yeah, so, so our, our first-line trucks right now are, are eight years old and two to three years old. And then we have uh, the ladder truck is about four years old. We're just getting that back from those out for repair. And then we have two trucks from the, from the uh, like nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-six.
Are those the ones that we want to replace?
Yes, and one of those, once the ladder truck is fully back in service, we're gonna get rid of. We only keep four, four engines, uh, uh, including the ladder. And so, so then we'll have the nineteen ninety-six that we're gonna wanna replace with, with the new truck in, in a few years from now. Because that ninety-six does get put into service from time to time, and that's.
I, I know this sounds crazy.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just gonna say it.
Okay.
What if we started like a contribution fund?
It's a crazy idea.
I, I think, I think we could probably raise this million dollars, no joke, in a month. And we, and we can put it towards a new fire station. You know, I'm gonna work on something.
Okay.
What's that? Donate to the website? You can go up to the podium. So we keep playing musical chairs over there.
So one of the items that Corporation Council Farina has been working on is creating a civic association, which would allow the city to uh do crowdfunding, pretty much, or any type of donations for both our commissions and specific projects within the city. Um, so I know that that's in the works right now, so that we can accept donations of that type.
Awesome. We'll work on something. I think that's awesome.
Yeah, and then the other thing would be two squads, and again, uh, squads take about two years to get as well.
But I think, you know, with the wishful thinking and hopefully we can get this done.
Yeah.
Most important thing, mayor, uh, maybe we can speak with HR, um, you know, we've only hired one position. We need eight or six. Maybe we can get the, get the ball rolling on that. I know she did very well with uh hiring a lot of the police officers, and we can start doing that with our fire department as well. Sorry, can you turn your mic? Maybe we can market it a little better?
Can we put some billboards out on freeways or?
No, billboards too much. Just maybe hit social media on, on Facebook a couple of times, if you don't mind. Thank you.
So just to be clear, chief, you requested the amount of money, but it's not in the budget for this year, correct?
That's right. And there, and another, another one of the big pieces in there was uh three hundred fifty thousand dollars for a system called Opticom. And that's, that basically will control the traffic lights. You pick so many intersections, and it's, it's a big expense. Uh, you have to put a transmitter on the vehicles, and then the, it's not, it's, it's not the old, there was something called the E-light. I'm leaning forward, I'm not sure if you guys can hear me all right. Um, that, that would just flash a fire truck. This will actually control the light to turn from green to red, so you're controlling the light itself. And it does it early enough, so they call it, they flush the intersection, so, so it changes early where all the people that are currently in the intersection will have a green light, and they'll pass, so when we approach the light, it'll be totally clear and.
And it's safer.
And safer and faster, and, and it would work for police as well. Now, as I said, it's three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's a big expense. I don't know if you remember Lisa Martin, she's now been hired by Romulus, who is writing a, a regional grant.
Why would she be hired by Romulus?
Um, she left and she's doing like a contract work, writing grants, and so they hired her to write some grants, and um, and she's writing a regional grant for them, and so we got attached onto it, of course, and so, so I've submitted uh all that request, hopefully for that, and if that goes through, then, then we'll be successful in, in getting that filled without having to hit, hit our budget.
That would be awesome.
That would be, yeah.
Lisa is definitely, but was an asset to our city. It's a great loss, and hope she does grow in all her future endeavors.
Yeah.
Who knows, maybe we can bring her on as our grant writer.
There were fire departments just waiting for her retirement, and it, because they just pounced as soon as she left, because it's kind of, you know, they can't poach her from us, but um, now that she's retired, she's working as contract um to, to, to write some grants. No, she's, she's good at it. So yeah, that, that's kind of all the high points of, of the, of the budget cycle for me this year. That, those are the things we've been working on.
You tell her that anything she applies for on her grant writing, she can also just submit, do you want to hide his name into it?
She knows. We still, we still talk frequently, you know, we have a good relationship, so yeah.
I'll, I'll send her a text soon, okay? Here, you're gonna help us get a new fire truck. What's his name? I mean, he's got some big shoes to fill. That's amazing. Thank you.
Chief, can you tell me more about the fire uh grant, item number nine forty? Nine hundred and thirty thousand, item nine forty.
Isn't that the fire truck we approved?
No.
Hang on one second. I think your mic might be off. I noticed it too, by the way, Angela.
Yeah, it's on, no. No.
They don't call it proactive Angela for nothing. Councilman Sob actually uh did a big hoarder on, on batteries. If you wanna give him the old ones. Very weird. I said, what, what do you, what are your habits? And he said, I collect batteries. Spout your batteries. Very weird, very weird individual.
Apparently, my cousin.
All right.
Speaking to it.
So yes, so are you, can you guys hear me again?
Yeah.
So yeah, so back to the AFGs, we, we did submit for engine. We submit for engines every year. We, that's one of the AFGs, uh, there's different categories, and vehicles is one of those categories. We put in for engine every year. They're just real stingy with that one, and we haven't, we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten an engine yet. So if we get it, that would be great, but you know, I'm not, I'm not optimistic.
Okay, so if you, if you didn't get it yet, how come we have it here?
Sure.
So that's another one of those things that we are asking for it, so we have an offsetting revenue, so it nets to zero. If we don't get the grant, we won't have the expense.
So this will be normal, like even though it's, it shows in the recommended budget, that should be, that's fine?
Yep, that will be fine, because it has the offsetting revenue and expense. So if you wanna look where the revenue is, you don't have to look right now, but it's on page two, and that's one oh one zero zero zero, six three five zero zero one is the offsetting revenue. And that's the exact same amount.
What page is it on, you said?
Page two.
And if we go up to uh line eight eighteen, contractual services.
I'm so sorry, one less thing, councilman. What's the number again? One, just the last four?
Sure, six three five zero zero one.
Six three five.
It's about a third of the way down the page. There's a blue line right under it.
Point nine five three.
Yes, that's the two capital outlays, the one oh, the one oh two three five hundred.
The one oh two three five hundred.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, line eight eighteen, chief.
Okay.
Uh, says uh increased due to a new software. What software are we talking about?
So we currently have a, a, it's a, our N-FR's reports, which is the reports that uh you make for any fire report. It goes to the state, and then it goes to the federal. You have to have a program for that, and we have a, a system that's our, it's uh, manages the whole fire station. So all of our scheduling is done on there, so um, you request for time off, everything is handled through the software. It's kind of like a whole station management. Well, the company that makes it was bought out by a larger company, and so we're no longer supporting that software. So we're trying to find, um, it's still working now, but they're not supporting it. We're trying to find a um, ESOs who bought it. I'm working with some of the other fire chiefs, because they're dealing with the same things. And we're hoping that we can uh find, find a software, but it's gonna, it, it's gonna have an increase in um, it's gonna cost more. We, we went with emergency reporting was the name of it. We went with them because they were the least expensive one, and that's why when they got bought out, they wanna, you know, get rid of the competition.
Any other questions? Do you wanna finish your presentation? Do you have anything else for us?
No, that, that was all.
Councilwoman? What's that? Councilman Conson? You gotta recollect your councilman, Tom?
No.
All right. Thank you so much, chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
As always. Thank you for your services.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is uh public information on page thirty-one.
Page what?
Thirty-one.
I'm sorry, before we move on, if you don't mind, just looking at the bottom number for the fire department. It shows the projected activity would be ten million six hundred and fifty-eight, but now with the recommended budget, we're going up to twelve seven four seven.
The two million is an offset.
Ah, that's what the, the one, the one we took off, the, for the fire trucks?
Yeah. Two million is an offset.
It's still increased about, okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
So you're still adding it as an expenditure? Doesn't mean it's gonna be? We are on page thirty-one. We are looking at our public information. Got a lot to say.
There we go, there we go. Okay, hello. Um, pretty quick one this year. Um, in the past, of course, we, we combined the public information along with cable. Uh, this year, we decided to split it out separately. Um, my role will be the public information, obviously. And this uh consists primarily of things like the newsletter, um, uh, production of press releases, photography work, um, several things along those nature, uh, along those, those lines, okay? So, uh, first off, uh, salary, um, unfortunately, I'm not making seventy-five grand a year. That's uh, that's for two of us. That's uh, two part-time positions. That's John Zadikian and myself. John, of course, heads up the uh, the social media activities, okay? So again, that's for two people, okay? Let's see, any other significant supplies, pretty general, fifteen hundred dollars. Newsletter, a little higher this year. Obviously, paper and postage have, have gone up considerably over the past while back, but in addition to that, I, I have a, a vision this year that I want to do a monthly e-blast newsletter as well. And that will be uh city announcements, events, things of that nature, uh, something, it'll be an opt-in basis for the residents who want to receive it. But again, it'll be, be going out on a monthly basis, just capitalized, very short information.
So just keep in mind, usually what happens when people kind of feel like they're being spammed so often, I'm not saying so. That's when you start getting a lot of people unsubscribe, 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 so be careful.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, that's number one. Number two, thank you for your services to you and Mr. Zadikian. Uh, but I will tell you how I do feel. Anytime I feel like there is a public event, I feel like this council should be considered more often than not. And I've said that to you, and it's nothing personal, but I just feel like every single time we're at an event, I'm the city, on the city page, which is a city page. It's not a personal page. It doesn't belong to the administration. This council is never showcased on there ever. I hopefully, this year, you and Mr. Zadikian can take more photos of the council and showcase us on the city page, including the clerk and the treasurer and our employees, because it's a city page.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh, okay, so um, again, basically, going back to the newsletter, it'll be the same, same format, um, two issues per year, uh, summer and, and winter, and then uh monthly e-blast. And, and again, that uh, that e-blast will be an opt-in thing. That, that's not gonna go to.
And that e-blast, consider all the council if they wanna be a part of that e-blast, not just the administration.
Oh, no, it'll be, it'll be society, it'll be um, uh, citywide.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Uh, bear with me here, um. Professional fees? Yep, yep, yep. Media support, uh, again, small and all for photo labs. From time to time, we do need to uh secure printed photos as opposed to electronic things. Production of this, this uh, a, a new calendar, we would like to do this year as well. Again, promoting city events, things of that nature, uh, twelve-month calendar.
Invite the council to these city events too, please.
Sure, okay, certainly. And uh, finally, uh, again, uh, I'm looking at the, uh, probably need for doing several different types of brochures, collateral, collateral materials, things of that nature. And that's all wrapped up in the, the ten thousand, okay?
You're a good man.
And the rest of them are pretty small potatoes. Um, getting down to um, uh, capital outlay, I've got some photo equipment that's getting, uh, getting a little long in the tooth, so I think we're gonna have to uh start looking at replacing some digital camera equipment, things of that nature, and the thirty-five hundred should cover that pretty well. And that, that's it for the uh, the public communication side.
So is that why the older cameras don't uh, don't produce any pictures of the council members in their?
Hey, I, so I just wanna make it clear, though, for the record, you are going up because we are combining the two, correct? So you and Mr. Zadikian are now under one.
That is great.
One budget, so we're not separating the budgets.
That's great, yeah.
Just for full disclosure, for those who are seeing it at home, we are going from sixty thousand to one thirty-five, or I'm sorry, we're going from thirty-six thousand seven hundred to one thirty-five eight nine two, but we're combining.
John, John's and my work.
John's.
And that would cover, again, my, my primary role, or my most frequent role is media, media relations. John handles the social media.
You're on my opinion, you're way underpaid, sir. Way underpaid. You do a great job.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I, I appreciate your kind words, but, but honestly, um, you know, I'm having a ball.
Having a ball.
I'm, I'm.
You're enjoying life.
I'm, I'm, I'm a happy camper with.
That's it, man. I'm not mad at you. If you, hey, listen, if you're happy, I'm happy.
I'm grateful.
I like happy campers.
I'm grateful for what the city's doing to me.
Thank you. The city's grateful to have you as well. So is his body. Just showcase us sometime.
Yeah, you got it, okay. Now, uh, just for the record, though, we're talking about separating things out. You will be getting another presentation for the cable operations.
Yes.
So that'll be separate from this part of it, all right?
So this, that has nothing to do with the PAC fees, correct?
No.
No money come in?
No, 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 no. I will, uh, I'm shooting to, to have some advertising coming in uh for the newsletter. Um, I'm estimating, I'm hoping for about ten thousand a year. I don't have that in here, and I apologize. But uh, but again, we're gonna be trying to sell more.
I was gonna ask the question, don't you like charge ads? I know Councilman Ahmad paid in the past.
Right, right.
Uh, Antonio's.
Right, 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 exactly, exactly.
That'll offset a few things.
Right, exactly, right. We're, we're, we're shooting for. We're shooting about, for about, hopefully, ten, about ten thousand per issue, so twenty grand for the year.
Let's opt in a little bit.
Let's see what I can do. Let's see what I can do. Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Nah, thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
You too, sir.
Thank you.
Just to mention the ads for the newsletter, we do have ten thousand dollars budgeted on page two, at the very bottom.
It throws us off when we go back to page two, then go back to page thirty-one. You know, but there's Cliff Notes, like we've asked in the past, like they do in the state senate or state reps. Cliff Notes, keep on page one, zero, one, one, nine, four hundred. Go back to page two, you go see that. This will offset. Just for future recommendations from Plant Moran, the very highly anticipated, respected. Thank you.
All right, council members, the next item on the agenda is the city council budget on page four.
Most important budget.
What page is this?
Four.
Oh, man, these guys are, these guys are great.
These are big numbers.
These men and women here are great.
For the most part, we're looking at a small increase in the salaries and the benefits. Other than that, everything is the same as twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I would like to make an amendment for this, on this. We would like to bump up the legal fee, which obviously would have to come before council, from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. Can you make that recommendation, please, and it reflects on there? You can bring it back in front of the council.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or any comments on that?
Are you okay with your media?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. What about education? Do you want to keep it the same?
What do we got, education?
They have a thousand right now, one thousand.
I mean, how many programs do we really attend? I think a thousand is more than enough.
I got one other question. I don't know if it costs us, so maybe you can look into it. But in the past, I hear a certain council member, I actually heard the council members always had access to BSNA. I spoke with former council members, and they said they've all had access to BSNA. I have never been in access to BSNA. Is there a fee for us to have BSNA? Does anybody know that? Is it on our, no?
It's actually part of a license that we pay for. Everybody can have access to it.
David Cooper would know, but, yeah, we pay for it.
We can write that down, council?
Somehow it'd be restricted, but I'll call, I'll get in contact with them.
There was already...
Yeah, the only question we have is, is you're only given so many licenses. You never have unlimited licenses? And so, typically, what will happen is, is you reach that limit, and then you've got to buy a new bundle of licenses. But we can check with Cooper.
I think everybody will have access to BSNA. But I remember walking into the mayor's office earlier this year, and somebody was complaining that they were going on BSNA, and they had to pay something. And the mayor told them, like, it's not us, it's BSNA, you know? So, I don't know if we need to budget so that we can have access to BSNA, it's the council members, but, yeah.
Council chair, I think Madam Clerk did put in a request ticket over two months ago, and she hasn't gotten a response yet.
It's okay, I'll follow up with the mayor. I'll send you an email. Council chair, I think we need to do something about the supplies too. I mean, projected activity is a thousand for this year. We've only been given a five hundred. And I think last year, we had like fifteen hundred for each council number, for like supplies and stuff. Yeah, I don't know why it doesn't show here.
It was a thousand dollars activity projected.
No, last year, we each got fifteen hundred dollars. Fifteen hundred for each council number.
So, why did it drop?
Well, you can go ahead and update then, I guess. Fifteen hundred times seven. Doesn't mean, you know, each council member is going to use the fifteen hundred dollars, but it's a placeholder. I mean, phones and laptops, business cards, paper with our names on there. I don't know.
Envelopes.
Envelopes, pens, envelopes? Never got an envelope.
How about binders and paper?
She turned you a good man. It's a good joke. Plus, the supplies, I think, needs to be up too. I think that's what Clerk uses for us. Well, hold on, supplies plus council members? Supplies would be technically per council member. So, the supplies would go up fifteen hundred per each person. Yeah, but those supplies, I think, what Madam Clerk uses, when she writes the... Yeah. It would be the computers too. Yeah, but our supplies, I'm saying is going to go, our supplies is going to go up ten thousand to ten thousand, five hundred instead of five hundred bucks. So, it's going to be fifteen hundred dollars per council member. And she's going to, the Madam Clerk will use whatever she needs from those fifteen hundred. Yes, yes. Based off of supplies. Does that make sense? I mean, anytime we ask for anything, we always go through the clerk regardless. Ten thousand, five hundred to the clerk's office. I mean, to the supplies for the council members. That's okay.
And just so I'm clear, council chair, that's an increase in legal from fifty thousand to a hundred?
Correct.
And then, an increase in supplies from five hundred to ten thousand, five hundred?
Correct. So, you should see a sixty thousand dollar increase in council's budget.
Was there anything else?
That is it.
Next item on the agenda is corporate counsel, which is on page ten.
I'm so sorry. Just give me one quick second, guys. Our recommended budget will be one seventy-five, five, seven, zero, plus sixty thousand. So, we'll see two thirty-five, five, seventy. Roger. How you doing? We are not debating today. You're not in court. I said, we're not debating. We're not in court today.
Well, I just was. Mediation.
Mediation is supposed to be calm.
Sometimes.
But when Roger's in the room, they're playing games, huh?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council chair, how are you, sir? I did let our council chair pretend that I was going to be...
Thank you.
We have our budget. Do you want me to start or just...
Yeah, this is your budget.
What page?
Page ten.
Our budget is reflective of what we had last year. I had asked for the juvenile court. Initially, it was denied by Kim Worthy. However, I did go back and pursue it. I met with, twice with all the superintendents for the schools. We did re-meet with Tony Guerrero and Kim Worthy in February. He gave us the green light to go forward with the program. I've talked to Bob Heimbach, Herb Jenkins.
Pardon? Okay, go ahead.
And they're in charge of juvenile court. So, we will have as a diversion program with our court, which will have the juveniles and their parents come to. I've been working with some universities to look at some alternative plans for what to do with the young people that come through the court. In other words, not just as the trend in Michigan, get away from large fines on families or incarceration, but alternative sources. So, that's what we're working for, and that's what our budget will include, which will include, which we targeted, trying to get, obviously, cleanup programs where they work on blight. But also, as Dearborn used to do, apprenticeship programs for like plumbing, carpentry, different skills that we can teach these kids. Remedial reading programs. We've talked to, we're talking to some schools such as U of M to look at alternative educational requirements for the students. So, we're working on that in our budget here. If you have any questions, I hope I was, I'm sorry, I was rushing, but if you have any, yes, sir.
I know that we requested... I know the mayor gets mad when I say names, but Mr. Saad was supposed to be working part-time with you, correct?
Mr. Saad...
Yeah, we budgeted for him to work last year to work part-time with you.
Right, yes.
Now, I don't see it here. All I see is a paralegal, and he's an attorney. I wouldn't see why he'd be...
He's in our budget.
No. No.
Not the paralegal.
Oh, down here in the...
Yes.
Professional services.
So, it's not on the personnel page?
It's correct.
It's part-time. No, he's not. He's inside. He's not the paralegal.
No, he's not. I know he's not.
But he's part-time.
Yes.
Because the part-times are...
Are actually contracted. He doesn't have any benefits or anything else that comes through.
So, that's that two-ten?
Two-ten, eight, two, six.
Yeah, and it's two-ten now.
Right. He doesn't have benefits or anything else like that.
I mean, it's cheaper to have somebody full-time with benefits. So, he's making two-ten, you said, a year?
No, no.
No, no.
That's, can I...
No, I'm sorry.
That two-ten includes him, but it also includes any other outside contractual services.
Yeah, no, but we don't know, we don't see that, like, there's nothing on here as a line item under part-time. This is just contractual services.
Right.
And where he's rolled in here. We don't even know what he's using or how much any of these other attorneys were paying.
He's not a part-time employee. He's a contracted employee.
You'd have to go out for bid then. So, technically, he's not a contract employee. I'd prefer from saying that because then you'd have to bid him out.
No.
Or that job out.
Under the charter, I'm allowed to hire services, which I did. And then, you voted on him last year.
I know, but when we hire companies, we go out for bid on these companies, you bring it to us. And you say, based on my recommendation, I went out for bid on three bids, we went with this, which we've done in the past.
Not according to the charter, which allows me to choose...
I told myself, am I going to make an argument out of this one? Can we get a line item that says part-time and what we're setting aside for that person?
Sure.
I don't want to see another contractual services, please. So, figure out what that number is. I'm going to put a question mark on this, on this. Nothing, but there's nothing bad. I just want it to be transparent so that we're setting aside X amount of dollars, say eighty thousand dollars for a part-time special legal counsel. I don't want contractual services or when we're working with these other big law firms like we did with, you know, Matt Schenck and whatnot. How many do we have besides Mr. Saad?
We, well, Saad does a different role than...
Yeah, he works on the city ordinance and whatnot.
We used to use Rensilio and with Miyaki. And we moved away from them, which is cheaper what we're doing now. In fact, we're below budget, I think, in some of these areas that we've talked about. But instead of using them, we've used one service. We have an attorney. And I'm not to say to have an attorney with his culture and experience, which has allowed a translator, someone to speak Arabic language to a lot of the citizens that come through our court. And there's been a reflective camaraderie and relationship building without community, which are very...
Thank you for that.
And we've gone out and make sure that we're doing that and receptive to the court and the changes, so.
So, there's, like you were saying, there's different people besides Mr. Saad. Yeah, but his role...
Depending on the type of, the type of case we have for our litigation, obviously, we'll have lawyers through MMRMA, which are contracted through MMRMA. And then, we'll have separate attorneys for certain foyer issues or certain issues that come up, our water bills, things like that, that are contracted out.
And you said he was looking over all of our old ordinances. Remember when you said that to us when you first hired him on? And he's going to go through all of the ordinance in the city that are outdated, that need to be adjusted. And he had this whole role that he was going to take on when you first presented this.
Right.
So, he's not doing simple civil infractions. He's doing things like, or he's not working as like a prosecutor for the city. He's taking on roles to, remember, take off a little bit of the weight so that you can do these other work for the city. And so, I don't know if you remember that discussion, but the discussion was this. Hiring this part-time attorney on here because our ordinance is so old and outdated that you need assistance and help. And so, he was there to work on some of this stuff. And we all agreed, even Councilman Chair Abdullah was here at the time. We all said yes. All I'm saying is, and I don't care what he does or what he doesn't, I'm going to follow your, what you think is best. Like, you're the corporation counsel. We believe in you. All I'm saying is, and this line item of two-ten, eliminate what you're projected to pay for this man and put it under as a part-time position, because he's part-time. The rest of the contractual services that you have are contractual services that you went out for bid in the past that we don't need to know about.
Well, in response to your question, yes, we have, we looked at all of our ordinances, and he has helped us do that. We added Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays to the docket where we deal with arraignments, which we were not doing before June of last year. So, by doing that, we were able to cut down on certain settled cases earlier on. This was not done until June of 2023. So, by doing that, we've reduced Tuesdays and Thursdays dockets, things like that, to an extent. And then, now, we've increased with operating while impaired, operating while intoxicated cases. We're taking more on, so this helps us balance it. We've looked at, he's helped me with the food truck ordinance, the seal, corporate seal. We've looked at language in certain areas of the, of our bylaws and everything, and the charter that we've needed done. He's helped us and assisted us in doing that. We also have increased the docket to five days instead of two days before, which is what he's, he's filled that role. So, we've also increased the defaults on cases and prosecuting them, transferring it from the court and cleaning up five years of cases, which we've been doing with his help, to move it to the tax benefit. We're also looking at delinquent property taxes, caseload, which is about fifteen hundred cases, which I'm looking now and getting ready to tackle that with our treasurer and our assessor's office. So, our workload is increasing, which we'll be using him for as well.
Roger, I am more than well aware of the hard-working man than Mr. Saad is. All I'm asking is, please.
We'll add a light on it.
Actually, that was a good explanation, because I was looking at the numbers here because it says, when did he come? When did he join the city?
Really started February. We had some training, so May, June last year.
May of last year?
Yeah, when Gary...
Because I see activity till now, to the end of March, is about eighty-eight thousand. And you're projecting to be two oh two by the end of June. So, that's about a hundred and ten thousand extra from now till June.
But that's the other, that's the juvenile court.
Yeah, but those are multiple different law firms. I know, but what's going on?
That's the seventy-five thousand for our court, the juvenile program that we're doing that's added into that.
So, just get a breakdown. What estimate you think?
Absolutely.
That's it. And if we exceed it, and just bring it back in front of the council, and we'll amend it, and we'll give him, we'll give him more money. All I'm asking is that we see it from the past and moving forward.
Yeah, we've added like the series that we're doing in terms of using, like, we're doing immigration seminar. We've done the expungement fairs. We've done different legal issues we're bringing for free. But we still put time into putting that together for the citizens on behalf of the council, on behalf of the administration. We're trying to be reflective of and the needs of the community, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? Councilman? Okay.
We're still mediating, so I'll head back to that.
If there's no other questions, the next menu item is the comptroller's office on page fourteen. Must be clarified. Confidential.
All right. We got a lot to say about this one. A lot. You know how I feel about this. I can't believe we still have you guys.
Well, in a nutshell, we are seeing a reduction from the twenty-three, twenty-four budget to the twenty-four...
Sorry, I want to interrupt. You're welcome, Mr. Fayad. How you doing, sir?
Thank you. Councilman, let's keep it up. Go ahead.
Oh, we are seeing a reduction on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget as compared to the twenty-three, twenty-four. Bless you. The biggest reduction there is the...
Hold on. We're seeing a reduction from the twenty-three, twenty-four to the twenty-four, twenty-five?
Correct. So, the twenty-three, twenty-four was a million five. And the twenty-four, twenty-five is a million two.
Okay.
And the biggest, the biggest reduction was the professional and contracted services. As...
Can you explain what that is?
Yes, that's Plant Moran. But, but it's...
Not Plant Moran Gap. We're paying, I look at the backs, I look at the paybacks. It's not Plant Moran Gap. We're paying them money. And we thank you for your services. But I see the sixty-seven... But I see the 67,000, which is a lot of money at the end of the day. And we were, you guys were only supposed to be brought on here part-time. You were supposed to be here for six to eight months, not six to eight years. So.
I hope we're not here six to eight years.
I mean, you've been here for two and a half.
I know. Um, in that contractual services line, though, it's us, it's the auditors, it's pay lossity fees, it's-
Pay lossity fees is paying this that much? We must go back to ADP then.
Uh, no, but in total, and that, that big number, that's included. Also, any Robert Half invoices go through there, um, and various other contractual professional services. So it, it, we do make up a large chunk of it and that's primarily why we're decreasing it.
You know how, you know how much we used to pay historically since that's an, we usually pay around 300,000, 250,000 to our comptrollers. We are now paying 1.25 million dollars. We are not, we are not less than what we used to be. We may show a 300,000 dollar decrease from last year to this year, but we saw over a thousand percent increase in the last two and a half years. And I'm not trying to be tough on you guys. Look, you guys are doing your job, but we're the decision-makers here, you know? Our, our, our biggest thing is to have a balanced budget, be fiscally responsible. I know the administration stepped out for a second. This is us not being fiscally responsible. We are not being fiscally responsible. What we could do is offer you a heck of a job to come work with us here in Dearborn Heights. But I think Plant Moran Gap as a whole, I mean, we really need to find our, you know, we have to find our, our closure very soon, I think.
We have the same goal, Council Chair. Absolutely. We-
I mean, we don't want to see you go.
No, we want-
But we do want to see you go.
We want to make sure that you're self-sufficient. That is our goal. And that is why we are trying to train your staff now, um, the people who are in the comptroller's office and work with them as a transition.
You know what the problem is, though? We've seen three different comptrollers and we see one who just told us, I will only be here for a little bit of time and then you'll hire somebody else who potentially, there'd be four or five comptrollers since we've had you guys. It's a little dangerous.
The question is why?
And I don't mean this, I'm just kind of speaking, I'm venting a little bit because something I've been wanting to get off my chest for a while. Are, are the comptroller and deputy comptroller even an asset to us anymore? Because then at that rate, they would rip off 200,000 dollars completely and we'd only be at a million and technically we've only went up to 650,000 compared to last year, but 700,000 over the years or 800,000 over the years.
I thought we were hiring more people too in the comptroller's office. How come we're not budgeting for more people?
I didn't, I didn't think we were hiring more people. We had already hired the deputy comptroller.
So there's only four people works in your-
We've always budgeted for a deputy comptroller. We just gave a raise to the deputy comptroller position. But we were always told that we were gonna hire more people, uh, to the comptroller's office so that we can start transitioning away from Plant Moran Gap.
So basically, whatever we were paying Plant Moran, we can get probably three more people full-time.
More? What are you talking about? You're paying-
Probably more, like six.
Well, I think, I think-
You can hire a bunch of ordinance officers too if you want in there. Let them just look at-
I think the one thing that, that Michelle said was, is the transition.
I understand, but like Council Chair said, they've been, they've been here for two and a half years and now this is another year. So basically, we're assuming they're gonna be here for another year.
I would hope they would be here another year.
Well, that's what the lady before you said too, Bob.
Yes, but the reason why I say that is because I see, I see more value in her here than just the cost that she's incurring.
By no means are we not discussing Michelle and her capabilities or Plant Moran.
I just want to make it clear.
Martin and Ramsey and like, these, these are people that, Plant Moran is the most prestigious accounting firms in the, in the country. We're not taking that away.
Okay.
We are saying to taxpayers who we made an oath to, that we've pledged to, we are gonna have to figure this out and start saying to the administration, figure it out. We are not saying to Michelle and Plant, I want you to know this is not you, Michelle. You are a rock star. Thank you.
What's the issue here? You guys said six months, so, 10 months, and now it's going on two and a half years. And now this is another year. Because the lady before you-
I will tell you, I will tell you what I heard. And, and this is not to offend anybody. Madam Treasurer, I'm asking you not to be offended by this. But I've been told that you, the reason why we still have Plant, and I'm not saying it's true. The rumor is we still have Plant Moran Gap is because we have not closed down 40 of our accounts. I don't think that's the, that's the source, but can you, can you tell me that, Michelle? Is that the reason why you guys are still here? You can take the microphone.
There's various, I mean, you've mentioned the turnover, that it's been difficult when you don't have experienced people coming into a job. We are here to, to really be as a stopgap, but also to help you prep for your budget, to help you prep for your audit. We, that, that is what we want to do and we do want to train your staff to be self-sufficient. That is my number-one goal.
Mayor, do we have an update on how much longer we expect Plant Moran Gap to be with us? I know last year we said, you know, when we first got on, four to six months or six to eight months, this will be our final year.
We still have a bunch of accounts that we have-
I asked that question and I asked that question.
We still, I mean, we still need them for reconciliation. There's a lot of bank accounts that we have to still talk about. Maybe we should have another study session to discuss that and see how much it's costing this city.
Mayor, I want you to know, we went from a budget of 300,000 to 1.25 million dollars.
That's the amount of bank accounts that we have. Just imagine if you have more than two, three accounts individually, how much time you spend balancing your-
Do you want to respond? Or, I'm sorry, Madam Treasurer?
Well, I'm just, I'm in a major difficulty. We can't blame everything on that, by the way. There's many reasons-
Please, I'll put the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, ooh, I don't want to touch that. Okay, sorry. To answer your question, the ones that you as a body have legislated have been closed. There are some that have not been that, you know, and Michelle and I have talked about like major streets and local streets because when we receive that, it goes right to the journal and to the general ledger that it's supposed to. So that argument of blaming or trying to blame somebody else or the accounts, I think is, is wrong. I think what we need to have an honest discussion about is that since I've been treasurer, elected November 2020, this is number seven for us, for me, as a comptroller. That's how much turnover we've had. And every time you bring somebody new in, and not to be disrespectful to anybody, but I would hope that we would consider hiring somebody that has some municipal experience. Because for us in the treasurer's office, we're starting over every single time. Every time there's a new comptroller, we gotta start all over again. And I think it's hard on a lot of people. I think everyone is trying. I will give credit where credit is due. But I think, you know, trying this approach of blaming the accounts is, really, that's off-base.
All right, thank you. I don't want to go back into this discussion.
Council Chair?
Go ahead, Mayor.
I mean, all I gotta say is, okay, brainstorm other cities what they're doing. Okay, and how many accounts they have. Even city 10 times the size of our size does not have the bank accounts we have.
Yeah.
You know, this, okay, we already been talking about this. We just keep going in circles. We've had a most reputable company that I know that recommended some bank closures and again, to make us more efficient. It hasn't been done. That's all I said. I'm not blaming anybody. All I'm saying is we have to follow what-
So you're telling me if we shut down a bunch of bank accounts, Plant Moran Gap's gonna go away?
Probably, yes.
Michelle said it's more than just-
Council Chair?
It's one of them, but there's, you know.
Council Chair, if I may, please?
Madam, you know, Madam Treasurer?
I just want to answer that, please.
I already know, you know, we're gonna-
Because I talked to Comerica and they said that you cannot do pool accounting. We're not ready for that. And Comerica was not even consulted on what that's gonna look like for us.
Okay, let's not have this discussion. We'll take it to a study session. Right now, we're gonna talk about this. Councilman?
Uh, comptroller, so the comptroller's office took over the reconciling of the bank accounts?
We're actually working on, finishing up the training on that as we speak. I think we have a few accounts left to go, the larger ones that are more complex.
About a year, two years ago, we were cited by the state treasurer in our audit that that was a deficiency, correct?
Correct. It, it was a deficiency two years ago. It went away when, obviously, when we came on board. And the plan is to train the staff that's currently there in the comptroller's office to do those reconciliations timely and accurately so you don't repeat that finding.
Was that issue, was that a comptroller's issue or treasurer's issue?
It was a comptroller's issue.
Previously, though, it was the treasurer's office that did the reconciliation. Someone in the treasurer's office when John Riley was treasurer?
So bank reconciliations, because of segregation of duties, need to be done by the comptroller's office. So the treasurer is in charge of, with investing and receiving money. The comptroller is responsible for the reporting and reconciling of that money to the general ledger.
Thank you.
Well, I recall John Riley said, I mean, he had a separate employee dedicated to reconciling the bank accounts.
Yes, which is a, a segregation of duties issue. So the treasurer's office should not be reconciling the accounts. They can reconcile them, but they shouldn't be the ones reporting. They should be the comptroller's office.
For a second set of eyes.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Any other questions here? Council members? Councilman Constance? Can you fix that chair so I can see your lovely face?
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's moving on its own. It's got a gin.
All right. What's the next page we're on? Again, Michelle, this does not reflect you in no means. This is just, like I stated earlier, this is, you know, regarding our pledge to our residents. We could be doing a lot more money with that.
We are on the same page.
I know. Again, love to hear you. 200,000.
If there's, if there's nothing else, I think Michelle's turning red now and we can move on. We've all, we've all given her a lot of kudos. I don't know if she can handle that much. All right, I think the next page, council members, is page eight. We should be looking at the 2425 general government budget.
Can we go line item by line item on this, please?
Figured you'd ask that. My print is really small.
Michelle, you want to go through it? Yeah.
No, seriously, I can't read this.
We have it up here. Okay, so if we start at the top, um, hospital insurance doesn't have anything now. Insurance buyout, that's what you pay the people who decide not to get insurance. So that is budgeted just at about the increase in health insurance costs. Hospital, or the next line is general government retiree healthcare. And that, again, is going up by the same percentage of your insurance. Life insurance for Act 345 and life insurance for general government retirees are in the next two lines. Those are going up by the same increase as the health insurance. The general government pension, as you see, there is nothing there currently because that has now been moved to each individual department so you can be more transparent. And you'll see that as we go along the department budgets. The 345 retiree healthcare, again, went up by about the same percentage as any other insurance. The 345 pension expenditures are budgeted at the same amount as last year. That will be determined ultimately by the actual cost of the 345 system.
And we get there annually, correct?
Annually, yeah.
Correct.
The 345 OPEB pre-funding, and the next line is the OPEB pre-funding. So if you recall a couple of years ago, you have to have a corrective action plan with the state to bring your OPEB, your retiree healthcare balance, up to what is considered funded, which is 40% of what the total liability is. So every year, you have to contribute an additional 1.5 million dollars to that. It's broken out between 345 employees and general government employees. And so if you add those two line items together, you get 1.5 million. And it's split based on the number of employees in each retirement class. If you move down to the next line, you have workers' comp, 300,000. That's just what you pay MMRMA and workers' comp. Unemployment is just a small amount. The city does not have to pay too much in that. Supplies, that's just overall supplies for the city, paper, cleaning supplies, water, et cetera.
Should we, since paper's so expensive, according to our comptroller?
It is more expensive, but I think 115 is gonna be just fine. Then if we move down to sanitation, 2 point, I'm sorry, 3.7 million. We just increased it about 3% for inflation.
What does that sanitation cover exactly?
Uh, that's your CWCSA and your priority waste.
Thank you.
How come we went up on miscellaneous expenses?
Actually, I'm budgeting for you to go down, so-
From 21 to 15?
What do we spend? What do we spend?
It's anything that we just don't have a real category for. So it could be in supplies. It could be just really something that doesn't have a home. It's usually very small. As you can see, you've only spent 88 dollars this year so far.
By saying the projected actually is 21,000?
Yeah, we just put it in there for, it was the budget, so we just left it as 21,000. You probably won't go anywhere near there. And if you don't use it, it goes back into fund balance.
Why, so why don't we do it just for like 5,000?
We could do 5,000.
I'll put it-
Do you want to add that money?
We'll change that one. There you go, Councilman.
Um, and then there are some professional and contractual and contractual services. Those are about, they're 25,000 and 40,000. It's, um, various professional services like grant scout and that sort of thing. There, there's-
Sorry, Michelle.
No, you're fine. Go ahead. Absolutely.
Funding scout. You have them here as you said, 40,000 dollars, but they also get paid by the grant, right?
Correct, yes. So that's another one where you have to budget it in your budget. But when you do get grant reimbursement, it will pay for it as a separate revenue line. So, yep, you're very, you're correct.
So I think ultimately, we owe them, I thought it was 60,000 for the year, and then they took a small percentage for every grant that they received.
Yes.
Every segment of the grant we received.
Yeah, but they take a percentage?
Of every segment, of every stage.
So like if you're saying, like if we got a total of 50,000 and we got it in two segments, 25,000, 25,000, they'd be taking 1,500 and 1,500, 10% from each one. So they're ultimately still getting the 3,000. They're just not getting it all at once.
Correct.
Okay. Let's see, where were we? Uh, the smart bus expenses, 80,000.
I'm sorry, ARPA.
Oh, I'm sorry, skip that one. So that is the ARPA professional services. We have as 10,000.
What's that for?
It's BLN.
Honestly, I want to reduce that one. I don't think they provided us with significant help with that money because there was, the 10 million dollars that the city spent, Alan C. Young said there was no accounting for it and they were supposed to allow us to spend the money. Council Chair, I'd like to reduce this amount.
Well, you can put it as a recommendation. What would you like to see there?
1,500.
1,500 for BLN? Obviously, this is not ultimately, you still have to vote on that.
It's just today. It's next year's budget. He wants to reduce. Yeah. He wants 1,500. It depends on how much they use BLN, so.
What's the question, sir? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was just, I was just noticing that the 2324 actual through March is already almost two grand. And so are we saying, are we saying we're not gonna use them at all?
We have a signed contract, Council Chair, with BLN.
I mean, what the councilman is saying is, he doesn't believe that they're worth 10,000 dollars or to budget them for 10,000 dollars. We have a signed contract staying what?
With BLN. I don't have it in front of me, but I know we have a contract with BLN that you guys approved, the council.
Okay. Why don't we just put a, what, I'm messing with it?
I would like, I'd recommend it at 1,500. I'm good with that.
Okay, well, what we'll do is, what I'm saying is, if you heard me out, we'll get the contract from the clerk's office and we'll see what the contract states. Who knows? Maybe the contract expired. Mayor, don't add it in front of me. We can, we can budget it for zero dollars.
This is, this is nothing to the mayor at all. I'm just saying that we, when- This is, this is nothing to the mayor at all. I'm just saying that we, when Alan C. Young was here with the audit, that 10 million dollars was not, or like, what in order it was used on, his exact words. So, but we pay them for us how and where and when to spend the money.
Mayor, is there a monthly fee or do we just pay them once we use them?
It's task specific, so whenever we have a task, they bill us for the task that we ask them.
How, how often are we using them?
Well, whenever we request something with ARPA-related questions, we ask them for their opinion.
So mayor, my question is, I want to follow up to that question. So if they, we give them task-specific requests for the ARPA money, would we be able to get the tasks that we used the 10 million dollars with prior?
You got to be, the 10 million was revenue lost that we took. Every city, you know, most cities opted to get 10 million, which went in the general fund. So BLN, once, once it goes into the general fund, they don't come back. So it goes into the general fund, but you guys approve everything that gets spent in the general fund. So the 10 million, BLN, once it goes in the general fund, they don't, they don't go back and say, okay, this, this was spent on this. This was, whatever was spent in the general fund.
What else?
But the ARPA money, whatever for the water that we, we're going to allocate, you know, for the water projects that you guys approved at the last meetings. Now those, we can still ask them for specific, certain, certain things that they need to get us information on since they're expert in the ARPA. So again, you know, we talked about this before. You know, the ARPA money, you have to account for every penny is, is being spent and.
No, but we didn't count for every single penny that was being spent.
No, not the, the 10 million is in the general fund, council chair. Again, it's in the, the 10 million went in the general fund and you guys approve everything that gets spent from the general, or any fund.
Full disclosure, I voted no on that last one.
Should we move on?
Sorry?
Should we move on?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Make the recommendation though for 1,500.
Okay, great. Smart bus expenses, that's going up just a little bit due to more activity that's been happening with the smart.
What do we pay for smart bus? Anybody knows?
For smart? There's some payroll-related costs, things that go towards operating the smart bus system.
Drivers.
In the city.
Those are like ARPA buses that move seniors around?
Yes, yep.
Isn't that a county though?
No.
So we participate with the county.
It'd be DDA.
Exactly.
It's not the county.
Insurance, that's your general liability insurance, MMRMA. Street lighting is 1.45 million, just a little bit higher than last year, just an inflationary increase.
Is that like tough?
That's your streetlights all throughout the city.
Like that's why you pay DTE for the electricity, you mean?
Correct, yep. City-owned properties, that is the purchase of any city-owned properties that go to the Wayne, from Wayne County for auction. Dues and memberships, 50,000. We just kept that as last year. You've been very consistent over the last few years with that.
What is dues and membership, like the Richard A. Young Center and whatnot?
That would be any memberships of the city in general, like Chamber of Commerce membership or MML.
Eshkem Municipal League.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we spent about 45,000 last year?
Yep, and same the year before. So you're right on track. I figure bump it up to 50,000.
We had a lot of membership fees, dude. I mean, does this cover lifetime, LA Fitness?
It's one year.
Some laughs. Listen, just to lighten up the room a little bit.
Then if we go to travel and education, that's any sort of citywide travel and education.
So what happened to the phones? I know like both.
I'm sorry, councilman.
One second, councilman. Go ahead, finish it.
Like room, I mean, line 853, there's nothing for the phones and now line 991.
Yep, so 853 used to be the telephone for the city and then it's moved to IT department. So when we get to the IT budget, you'll see that that increased last year.
So I have a question back to the travel and education. So is this for us sending people for training, stuff like that?
Overall training.
We're way above that budget, way. Twenty times fold, we're over that.
Sure.
What are you talking about? Travel is five, five grand.
Yeah, but you know how many people we've sent out for training and other stuff?
This is general training. So certain departments would have their own training budget too.
Yeah, this would be like.
So this is just out of the city hall budget?
This is out of just general city training, like if there's a seminar here or something like that, that the whole city can attend.
Yeah, this is not.
Yep. Then we have sidewalk and weeds.
Hold on.
I have a question about that.
Yeah, no problem.
Can you give me the line item on sidewalk and weeds? One second, councilman.
That's 963.
963.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Let's get through me off.
We have a sidewalk program, I believe in the capital.
Yes.
So why are we at $100,000 or, I'm sorry, it is, yeah, 100, $100,000 for that?
Because if, let's just say you do a water main break or the city has a gas leak and they got to break that up there, we still have to budget for the, we're not going to charge the tax, you know, the, the.
Correct, yes.
But like when, when I had this resident, she had a gas leak. City was sending in to make sure that it was a gas, or a water main break. They broke down the concrete. Started throwing asphalt, but that was a temporary fix. Then they took off the asphalt and they put the concrete. Technically, the city's fixing it because it was our water main break that was broken.
I respect that completely, but that falls down into the capital improvement programs with sidewalk and section removal. This has nothing to do with it.
The sidewalk and section.
This is sidewalks and like weeds. This could be considered, is this considered weeds? Could that be considered trees, like sycamores or no?
It could be, yeah, really any removal of any.
So that's what, that's what I'm trying to get to.
We need to up that to like 500,000.
No, 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 hold on, hold on. You got to clear, council chair, please. So it says sidewalks, we need this line item clarified because there's, you got, you got, when we came in, there was, how much was a sidewalk there? And you said the repairs for sidewalks, it was, there was a sidewalk.
It's 300?
No, it's like 440 now, guys.
No, you just, you told us, I just don't, I didn't write it up. You said there was, there was a million, million, million dollars in salaries and you said sidewalks. And I didn't get the number for sidewalks.
Second sheet here.
And you said 1 point.
No, you're good.
Yeah, on that, that second slide there, that was, that was major sidewalks and local roads. So of that 942,300 was local sidewalks and streets.
Okay, so why is there another 100,000 in this budget for sidewalks also?
So for me, it was my understanding that this number is for maintenance and repair. So everyday events that take place, this is maintenance and repair. What you're talking about is actually projects that we're, that we're recognizing that we want to execute throughout this year, through 2425. These are more, I would call these more like emergency repairs. And sometimes it's one brick, sometimes it's a half of a block. I mean, it's not, it's not a full project.
Yeah, but that's what the city's going out with 300,000 to do is these trip hazard sidewalks, uplifted sidewalks by roots, everything. That's what the 300,000 is for. My question is that this 100,000 that we have laying here, and when we asked Michelle that, can we use this like for trees issues or stuff like that? You said yes.
And, and, and we, and we do, because again, it depends on whether this is something that is a, considered a capital project? Or is it something where you got to go in, you got to trim one, one limb off because maybe a lion's in the way? Or, or maybe the, the trip hazard is the left corner of the brick and not the whole panel? Like these, these are what we would call regular repairs and maintenance.
Okay, and how much of this money last year?
Did we use?
Did we use?
So last year in 2223, you used 84,000. This year, you've only used 14,000 year-to-date. So you might not.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if we could use this money for something else because the other sidewalk program. So if they're using this to clean up messes, you know, like for example, the tree stumping.
Okay, no, trust me, when we get to DPW, we are going to be putting a lot of money that they don't know about. I hope you guys can find some extra money because if you're going to spend 2.9 million in deficits, we're going to go up to like 3 million extra.
No, we're going to have a balanced budget. Hope the budget doesn't get approved.
Wow, okay. He's saying he doesn't want to approve.
A budget, I want a balanced budget too. That would be the wise thing to do.
So is the 100,000 okay right now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The rest, the next few are just your debt payments. So we've got the sanitation debt that you have every year, the fire station bonds, and then interest on both of those. And those are just regularly scheduled payments. So that's it for 200. I think that's it for everything. That's it for everything, yes.
Any questions from the council members? I just want to bring up, I wrote my notes down. I hope you were able to, Mr. Turner as well, about the adjustment fixes. One of which, the new balance for city council is 235570. I have that written down. I have 15.12% for, what is this?
That was the earnings that was on the general government pension.
Correct. There is, the general government, is there a page? We have a plus 325,000 in the mayor's office. We were going to fix the 213078 to 110578.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And then we were going to reduce the municipality, not municipality, miscellaneous to 5K. And Councilman Ahmad's recommendation of the ARPA professional services, BLN, is going to go to 1,500 again.
Recommendation.
What is that?
Councilman Sal.
Oh, councilman, did I say Councilman Ahmad? What can I say, man?
You're a good man.
And so those are just going to be those additions you, you can send over. Oh, and then for the city council, it was going to be 100,000 and our suppliers are going to go from 500 to 10,500. So a $60,000 increase for us. Any other comments, councilman, councilman, councilman? Anything from the audience? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Vince Trupkowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights. Just a little confused on why we would create a public information budget when we already have the cable budget. I mean, you're, you're lessening your opportunities to use the peg fees. I think that can be combined into one department and create it bigger and you could do broader and greater things with it. This is a BS department, I think. Just my opinion. Take it for what it's worth. Anyway, and the, the golf course. Why isn't that budgeted under the recreation department when we can have the recreation department do the footwork to make sure that the equipment and everything is maintained?
What is it?
The recreation department should be over, the golf course should be overseeing the golf course so that we have somebody making sure that the equipment is going to be maintained properly.
Pause this time. I will tell you, like I've said in the past, said it the day I voted on this, I voted yes for the golf course contract. But from the beginning, I even looked at the mayor, said it here on the record, it was quoted in the free press. This was not a good deal for the city.
Oh, I know that.
But we had no, we had no other options. Our other option was to keep it closed and have it become worse than what it originally was. The deal within itself was not a good deal for this city.
Right. I'm saying though, now that we own it, the golf course itself, not the banquet facility or anything like that. I mean, I know you have a management company and they're.
They're doing a phenomenal job.
They are. There are no doubt about it. But what I'm saying is budgetary-wise, that should be under the recreation department. So we have somebody overseeing the maintenance of the equipment.
Can I be honest with you?
Since it's our equipment.
Can I be honest with you though? This is the first time and I'm going to congratulate the mayor and the administration and Plant Moran and our comptroller. This is the first time that anybody's ever given us an update on what's happening with the golf course.
All right.
Anything, I, I, I really think, I really, and I thank them for bringing that forward to us because we, in the past, we didn't know. And the reason why we never got paid for so many years is because nobody put it in the budget. It's the first time ever that we have the golf course sitting before this body. So if anything, the administration was really being transparent with that.
I'm just making a recommendation for the recreation department to oversee.
Honestly, the recommended, but the, but the, if you read the contract, this is not, this was not a, what's the word that I'm looking for? Concierge or what, what not?
Concessionaire.
Concessionaire. It's not like it's a concessionaire anymore. We've changed it to where it is a tenant and a landlord. So technically, the landlord cannot just come in and impose on this tenant anymore when we switched it from, from being a leasing. So believe it or not, I, like I stated earlier, the contract is a terrible contract for the city. However, it does not mean it allows, if you're reading the contract, it does not allow the park and recreation department to come in there and say, we're going to be the one to tell you how to do one, two, and three. It's no longer that for the next 10, 15, 20 years. That's how the contract states it. Contract states that they dictate what happens.
Okay.
Not us.
Then are they going to dictate who maintains the equipment?
So that's why I said, they need to be the ones in charge of it. And guess what? There's a deposit that's held up on the side, a security deposit. If they destroy our, our equipment, we keep the security deposit and then we can go to court on the other things that happen.
Okay.
But really, the micromanaging on the golf courses, technically, we're not going to be allowed to according to the contract.
I'm not saying micromanaging, I'm just.
I'm, I'm, what I'm, I'm trying to let you know or to any of the council members.
If we spend a million dollars on farm equipment, do you want us, you know, just let it go to waste or are you going to maintain it?
No, I want it to be maintained.
Okay.
But the contract should have stated that. That's why I said it was a bad contract.
Exactly.
You know, but like right now, you, you, if you're the leasing or I'm the landlord and, and I'm renting out this restaurant. If the tenant in there starts not really maintaining the equipment inside the restaurant after 10 years, I'm like, man, why did I buy all this equipment? Why did I allow them to do this? They should have bought the equipment. But again, it doesn't go back to us. It goes back to that contract and I voted on it. I'm, luckily, Councilman Ahmad was out of, out of town. He's got an excuse. But the options that I had in front of me were limited.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good man, Vince. Anyone on Zoom? Yep, Mrs. King?
You want to have to answer his first question about the media department and the.
And the peg fees?
On the cable fee, cable department. Can we, can we still, can we use the peg fee to pay for the media department?
So peg fees are very restricted as to what they can be used for. Having it in a different department does not preclude you from using the peg fees. So if you were to buy a piece of equipment in that department that is eligible for peg fees, you could still do that.
That's what I'm saying. He wants to update the cameras. Why are we using peg fees to update the cameras?
He's right.
That could be a potential use.
So she's saying you can use the peg fees for other departments if they within the.
But I'm saying, I think it's, it's, your, our information.
He did, yeah, well, I'm sorry, Vince. What Vince trying to say is that, you know, I think he put 3,500 or 4,500 budget for a new camera and they're saying that we can use the peg fees for it.
Not only that, I think is in creating another department, why? I mean, that's just ridiculous.
You got to remember something. If it's, if, if the camera is going to be used outside of these chambers, then, and it's going to be used to take photo ops or of the council or of the city, technically, you can't use peg money to buy the.
It's public educational information. It's public and educational. So they can be used outside.
Can you, mayor?
You can't co-mingle different departments, especially with the peg money. You can't pay salaries. So that's why it has to be divided because you can't pay salaries, you know, for, and that's why it was separated. You know, the cable is different than.
We're talking about equipment.
The equipment, you know, we, we budget it for it, but you know, we can take it out of the, it does go out of the peg money.
And remember, it would still be budgeted. You'd still budget the expenditures. The money would just come from the restricted fund balance of peg. Yep.
Good.
Okay, we're going to Zoom. Mrs. King, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. BLN was mentioned about what we could do with the ARPA money. Am I, did I hear that right?
Correct.
Okay, so can BLN help us with the money that was allocated for the safe streets?
I don't know. I may, I'm going to bring that up at the next meeting though with Mr. Deeb. Or I'll send an updated email because I know that that resolution, the Joyce Smith Initiative was already passed.
Okay, I'm just going to stay on it because it's very dear and close to my heart.
Thank you.